Meeting called order. I'd like to say hello to everybody, good evening.
Good evening.
Now our role call.
Dr. Robinson here, Mr. Webb.
Here.
Dr. Buck here, Ms. Blair here, Mr. Dunn.
Here, all the present. Adoption of agenda, anything on agenda need to be changed? Amendment?
How do we get on the document?
Anything need to be changed or added? Not at this time can we get adoption of agenda?
I know that we adopt the agenda as presented.
It's been moved in second, all in faith. All right, page five zero. We'd like to do out of five, four, recognition and press attention. Five point one, valid. Mr. Moore?
Is Mr. Moore up there?
Is he here?
Is he up?
Okay. You can get a five point two. Nicker? Ms. Jackson?
Skip right. Press the comment.
We're gonna go back to that, please.
He's a child. Steve.
Oh.
Good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board, Mr. Butcher, Mrs. McDonald Green. The Southern Regional Education Service Agency, which members are comprised of over thirty-five counties in the state, award four seniors every year with a five hundred dollar scholarship based on their GPA, their ACT score, their academic resume, and they have to complete an essay on their future aspiration. The student that I will be recognizing today was one of the four students to let in within the state. She has a four point oh unweighted GPA and a four point five weighted GPA, ACT score of twenty-eight, super score of thirty, and her essay was on merging two of her, um, career aspirations, which she's always had a passion for teaching and healthcare. And she talked about how her dream career is to be an occupational therapist, and that is National College senior, Ms. Sierra Dempsey.
On behalf of Mr. James and members of the board and all the staff of National School District, we want to congratulate you not only for representing yourself but for representing students in a very, very outstanding way. Good luck to you, okay?
We'll get it from his mouth.
Welcome to the mall.
Good afternoon, President James, members of the board, Mr. Butcher, Ms. McDonald Green. We're here to recognize the students. Uh, we have two categories. First one, recognize those students who participated through our digital media program and Negro Women's Contest for Writing, Speaking, and I want to say talk.
Video.
Video. Uh, we'd like to recognize Ja- Jamie King, first place winner, ninth grade art category.
Janice King. Janice, I think, Janice. Okay, Janice.
Come on, Janice. Go ahead.
Then we'd like to recognize Darian Bowie.
All right.
He tied for second place. With this first name, Anira Lanes.
Anira Lanies.
Lanies, tied for second place in poetry. There we have Jalen Matthews, he placed third in poetry, ninth grade. Tenth grade, we have Juan King, first place essay category. We have Melania Smith, tied for second place in art video essay category.
Is Melanie?
Melanie.
Melanie.
All right, Melanie.
She had a mask on.
Yeah, Kalina Collins, tied for second place, tenth grade art video essay category. Kristen Jackson, third place, tenth grade art video essay category. Eleventh grade, third place, Darian Deed in the art category.
Take your mask now, babe. Take your mask now, Darren. Darren, take your mask now.
Take your mask now.
Your mask.
Where they go, son? There we go.
We have first place, eleventh grade, in poetry category, Elisa White. Second place, we have Adrian Malone Junior, art category. Kayden Allen, tied for second place in twelfth grade poetry art contest. Kristen Jackson, third place, in the twelfth grade essay category. Nathaniel Lord, third place, fourth grade art.
Put your mask down. I'm gonna smile, babe.
There you go. Great job. That's all right.
Uh, the next group of students we'd like to recognize, three years.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
And the attendees. The National Council of Negro Women would like to thank the parents of these young people who permitted them to participate in our Creative Expressions Contest. It was a statewide contest sponsored by the National Council of Negro Women. Students from the North Mississippi coast, all around, and Natchez has the most. By the way, would the members please stand who are here today?
Thank you all for allowing us to participate. Every year, I think you all come to Fallon to get our students to participate, and we ask that you continue to do so. Our next category, uh, three years ago, we brought back our Teacher Ed Preparation Program to kind of build our own teachers going forward. Mrs. Sharnette Miller took on that task, and she is growing the program steadily. Uh, we participated this year in the Ed Rising State Competition held in Cleveland, Mississippi on February twenty-fifth of last month, and our students did great.
Yes, they did.
Six third place. One third place winner and one fifth place winner. Uh, we first like to recognize Emmanuel Jones, he placed fifth in public speaking.
EJ.
Congratulations to you. You bring a speech for me, that's good.
There you go, man.
Next, we'd like to recognize Martin Anderson, he placed third. Justice Allen, she placed first in Research. And she was assisted in that category by Ms. Dantasia Ware, who also placed first in Research. Destiny Johnson, first place in Research and Learning.
I'm loving this beige, y'all, rock.
Ms. Miller.
We should have, uh, twenty-eight women next year.
Yes, sir, we should. Kristina Reed, first place, Research and Learning. We had Asia Brown, who placed first in Teach- Teacher Created Material. And we have Harmony Washington, she also placed first in Teacher Created. Think that's all we have, and also Mr. James, members of the board for next. Yes, I did. Ms. Miller, their sponsor, I called her name first. Stand up, Ms. Miller, so everyone can see. Ms. Sharnette Miller. Uh, Mr. James, members of the board, you all may see a lot of students in Natchez on next week. Uh, we have the FCC LA Convention will be held here at the Convention Center next week. Uh, our students at Fallon will be participating. Dr. Punch, I anticipate you asked me what those, uh, nitty little stands for, so that's Founder and Career Community Leaders of America.
Thank you.
But, uh, their convention will be held next, uh, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday here in Natchez. I think it's eight hundred and fifty high schools will be in Natchez. Thank you all. We want to thank each of you who've come in, we want to thank each of the staff members who work with the students, but especially want to thank the students, you know, both of these students, nine and ten graders, that means that the teacher career program, and also the contest sponsored by the Negro Women's League, you know, there's a great future there, so we want to thank you for encouraging our students and giving our students, allowing our students the opportunity to participate.
Awesome. Mr. Butcher, thank Ms. Green.
If you all want to stay there, pass.
Thank y'all. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. I like that.
Wait here, come on. Come on, come on, Lele.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can go to our public comment. Mr. King?
We have the new board, uh, president, uh, President. I am the rephraseer King, uh, next time, uh, mother of a couple of children, next time too, already come through. But what I wanted to do today was just make a comment, uh, and talk to you about, um, uh, seed, uh, second career since nine to ten, talk about now who supplies the soil, other bread and food also supplied, we increased in the store of the seeds with enlarge and increase. And so I'm here to talk about how I want to be able to help increase our community. And I know that I would need to come back and make a more formal proposal to the school district, but I just brought about a little something, like I said, I just wanted to plant my seed, hoping that you all would help to grow and, um, let you look at it, but we want to, if I may. To present or to ask for usage of the brain facility for our programs, the Southwest Women's Association, Mrs. Ticky, and the Pretty Girl in the Brain. We have the Brain Organization, we have been working together, putting together community programs, and we are trying to, um, achieve a facility or to ask for use of that facility so that we can provide community programming, uh, for the provide life skills. As you know, a lot of the kids nowadays, they lack useful life skills that are critical in order for them to survive. Uh, and some of the things that we have already, they know that working in our capacity is providing workforce training and also providing some sort of professional development. We also want to touch and be able to talk to, uh, address the special needs as well too, because we do not have a life skill center here in Natchez anymore. But like I said, I just wanted to bring that to you, um, so that you can have that. And again, this is something that we would like to do in the community that will service the entire community. Uh, there is opportunity there for that to be an opportunity zone between those areas. And I know right now the building is empty, uh, we do not want other properties dilapidating our community that can increase our current crime rate. And we're hoping that when we bring this type of program in community, we will also be able to help to work on and increase some of those issues. But like again, I said, I know I need to be on the agenda to make a more formal, uh, presentation, but that document there just has a little bit of that information in there on what we would like to do. And then we have information, we're gonna be colliding people, uh, experts from the community. Uh, we would like to first start with the, uh, building there, uh, in the cafeteria. As you know, I am so fun, call Shepherd, then I do characters cooking classes. This is a skill that a lot of young men and women are, uh, are lacking, because a lot of time they're home, they still eat, uh, and adults as well too. So, like I said, we want to be able to help to give back to the community between our organizations to help with development of young men and young women, as well as adults bringing them in also, especially to help them with some of those life skills. So again, I will make an appointment to get back on the agenda to make a more formal presentation to you all, but that is just a little bit of a summary of the proposal, that was the proposal, but I don't know if you have it.
I think, I think the answer part of it was, you want to start off by just the cafeteria, you're not, you're not asking for the entire complex at this point?
Not right now. Eventually, we want to get there, but right now the cafeteria, they make it one of the classrooms. What we're envisioning is hoping that we can make it a full education and cultural center over there. Uh, so again, like I said, to where we'll be able to service the entire community. We'll start off with having, uh, some of the cooking classes and teaching them other basic life skills that they can learn. It's basically just how I wash clothes. I, I've worked in the school district, so I'm working with students who are on their teacher program, and I know sometimes kids have come to school clean clothes. So we want to be able to help some of the dress, all of those needs of basic life skills, and professional development skills as well too. I'm seeing that we have a lot of students here that are working on those things right now, but helping to take it a step further.
Okay, so before you make your final proposal, get in contact with us and we can kind of go and walk that cafeteria so you know we can help you, I'm saying, right?
Yes, sir, I should. Thank you, thank you.
That's what I have to say, uh, that's, that's long-term need. Because I know at one point in time, it used to be in the school system. As far as, you know, professional development and, um, you know, life and career as far as, my mom used to teach that class, so I, I know that the need and the importance of etiquette, uh, with our students, because a lot of them have no knowledge of it. So I want to see this proposal, and maybe not Frazier, maybe the middle school, you know, once we take a walk through and see, but it will happen.
We sure, we should do appreciate you. Listen to me today again, I wanted to plant the seed, and I'm hoping that you all could be the water to help it grow.
Well, let me, let me ask a question, I do have. I've seen you somewhere, pretty girl with green, something went on this weekend with that or something?
Right, this weekend, I was one of the board members, Ms. Asher Murray's the executive director, and we had a legacy and leadership awards program for Mrs. Anthony, uh, Ms. McDonald, was, Green was recognized as a person that has the torch to it. We know sometimes we need a leadership in community, and this is Women's History Month, so we wanted to recognize women who are, uh, wanting to be the leaders of the next generation. So congratulations, McDonald Green. And so there was a really good program, and we're looking next year to pass the torch on to someone else. And as you know, I say, uh, these things start at home, charity starts at home, and developing leaders starts at home.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
It's been good day.
Thank you for your presentation. Just call the office when you want to look at the building before you do your final proposal, okay?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Young?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Ira Smith, Scott Young. I was educated here in the district. My parent worked in the district. My father was a principal here in the district. My mom also taught school in the district for many, many years. I've been in education myself for the last forty-five years. I was a little disturbed today. Um, when my daughter come to me, she said, and I don't care how old a child gets, that's your child. She was a little disturbed because she was trying to apply for the Superintendent Leadership Academy. She was only trying to apply, not saying.
All right, Ms. Young, we got to talk to you there, that, that's a person there.
Okay, well, when you gonna put me on the document?
You stayed there later on?
Oh, okay. Okay.
We just, this whole type, you just go on. If you got the time.
Okay, yeah, I got the time.
Okay. All right, let's go with.
Five point three.
Five point three. Recognition, Mississippi School Board, recognition.
Uh, for the Mississippi School Board, uh, recognition.
This, um, month, earlier this month, we had the pleasure of, um, along with members of the board, attending the Mississippi School Board Association's Winter Conference in, uh, Jackson, Mississippi, where, um, school districts throughout the state were recognized for their achievement, of the achievements of students on the past spring's, um, MAP assessment. Um, the School Board Association recognized those school districts who earned Bs or As and had no, um, schools within that district who were rated as Level C. And so the school board, the Natchez Adams School Board is receiving the torch award for being a, uh, rated B school district and have no C schools in the district.
But, you know, you say the lighthouse, uh, school leadership award, and you know, those of you who ever looked at the movie, you know, when you're out sailing, whatever Casey is on the ocean, that lighthouse is supposed to be, you guys, and so where there is land sooner or later, you know what I'm saying? So we want to present this to the president of the board, so that we only have, of the time board. And we, we could, this achievement was made due to the fact that you take time to listen. When you bring a proposal, not that we always agree, but you always take time to listen to where we are and what we trying to do. The most important part about it, I think, you allow us the opportunity, when we plant those seeds, those mentioned earlier, let those seeds grow to maturity. So right now, thank the Lord, that this seed has grown to maturity, although it's taken quite a while for it to grow. You know, maybe didn't fertilize enough along the way, but at least at the end of the day, it did grow. So thank you for your hard work.
And I know that I can speak for Dr. Robinson.
And I know that I can speak for Dr. Roberts, Ms. Shapels, and, um, Mrs. Mills, who, uh, represented, uh, those schools who, um, moved from low performing schools to high performing schools. It was an awesome feeling to be a recipient and not just a observer.
I would also like to recognize Ms. Newton as well, a former board member, because she was part of this process right here.
All right. Item number six, six point one and six point two is approval of February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Special called Be Minus, approval of February fifteen, twenty twenty-three, regular Be Minus. Can I get approved?
Second.
And seven, all in favor? Okay, five zero. Okay, seven, item seven is approval of consent item. Anything in consent items, they want to move to action item, if not, can we get approved?
So moved by Dr. Roberts, seven, going to square, all in favor?
Item number eight, eight point one, uh, personnel report, anything? Okay.
Here we go, Mr. James, the members of the board, the officer human resources presents the most important report, eight point one, and the background safety list, eight point one A. This is a recommendation by the superintendent that the Natchez Adams School District Board of Trustees approved the attached personnel changes and submitted onto the attached document.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask the board to move that item.
Okay, we move eight point one and go to about eight point two.
No, just eight point one.
Eight point one A. Okay, just eight point one. Okay.
Second.
It's been moved in seven, all in favor? Eight point two.
All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Mr. Superintendent, Superintendent, the council. We have before you, you, item eight point two, the approval of the claim documents and acceptance of the financial reports. Within your documents, all the claim documents filed this date, February tenth, February twenty-fourth. Additionally, the February twenty twenty-three financial reports are included along with capital project sums. If there aren't any courses, it is recommended that the board of trustees approve the aforementioned claim documents and accept the files required financial reports as they are presented to the board and trustee's board.
Okay, we get approved? To the seventh?
So moved.
Seventh?
Done.
Been moved in seven, all in favor?
Done.
All right, passes five zero. Okay, eight point three, uh, we have, we just need to set. The professional government standard, we already signed, we're gonna leave it to the seventh, neither.
Mr. Chair, I move that, that we approve the professional government standards as presented and signed.
Second.
Move seven, all in favor? Eight point four.
Ms. Young?
This is a grant that Ms. Young is working with along with Ms. uh.
Ms. Campbell?
She ran along with Ms. Campbell in our type security grants. And for the most part, I think it looks pretty good that we go into security grants, we just need to, uh, go to the seventh.
Well, we want to, it's, um. It's for beach and gardens, is that it?
Growing, yes.
Rural gardens?
Growing there often.
Well, then we approve the early anticipation agreement. Second.
Could you move seven, all in favor? Eight point five, academic calendar.
Mr. James, members of the board, you have before you the proposed, uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four academic calendar. Uh, for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, the Natchez Adams School District will utilize a flexible academic calendar. Uh, this will be the third year of implementation. Uh, the flexible calendar, not to be confused with the year-round calendar, will provide teachers and students with meaningful breaks along with two intercession periods for innovative learning opportunities. Uh, the benefit of this concept will be increasing student attendance, uh, decreasing the amount of reteaching required at the start of school due to, uh, summer learning loss remediation, accelerated enhanced learning opportunities during the school year and, uh, reducing student and teacher burnout. Uh, parent, teacher, student, and administrative representatives from each school admit, uh, to give input on the calendar. Uh, so, and the proposed calendar still offers one hundred and eighty days of instruction. So it is the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four academic calendar.
Let me add ideas getting on there, we, uh, the meeting happened after five o'clock or six o'clock. And the parents were very involved and they asked some courses that I think that caused us to go back and change.
Definitely. Now, this is a proposal, so it can change, right? This is thing, this proposal, this will be, this will be allowed.
But it allows for flexibility as well.
Right, we'll come back, get approved of one, this board.
If we do any changes, it's flexible, cause we really are in the middle of thinking about a year-round schedule, but not quite there yet. Am I, is that right?
Not quite, the state superintendent has, uh, in there, his opening comments across the state has, um, discussed the possibility of encouraging school districts to go to a year-round calendar. But again, that's in, that's in initial discussion phases. Uh, at this moment, the, this flexible schedule is working for us. Uh, we've had a high number of participants at our intercessions and we've seen good, uh, progress from our students who attend those intercessions.
I move that we approve the calendar, I just a second.
Second.
It's been moved in seven, all in favor?
You have to give you, you have to give you a great review and unfortunately correct, these are not the most recent numbers. Uh, but right now, we, we have, uh, six hundred and fifty students in school right now. Uh, we also have forty chiefs assisting working, twenty-five chiefs working. And I did go around to, uh, to Matt Lauren, uh, yesterday, I think he was, and everybody was pretty working, uh, working very diligently.
Eight point six.
Thank y'all for your approval, eight one. Six, uh, Mr. James, members of the board, you have before you, um, proposed, uh, dress code guidelines for, uh, next school year. Uh, for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two and the twenty twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three school year, uh, Natchez Adams School District relaxed its uniform dress code based on barriers, uh, relating to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Natchez Adams School District will, uh, reinstate the uniform dress code as we prepare for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Uh, the dress code as presented is not as restrictive as guidelines, um, years past, yet it promotes appropriate dress for the school environment. Uh, the guidelines also address safety issues such as, uh, our favorite slip, trips and falls, as well as, uh, head coverings that hinder the identification of students.
So, then I have no crocs, Mr. Young.
As it is proposed in this dress code, no crocs, okay?
And members of the board, we have met, we've met with some, uh, teachers about two weeks ago and one of their main concern was we need to go back to some kind of dress code because of the fact that
Parents have said that to me.
They were unhappy with, uh, with their attire and students are wearing it. And it might not mean so much though their attire, but how they were wearing their attire, you know what I'm saying? Yeah.
Because even the crocs, if they wore a croc right, I don't think it would be a problem.
Correct.
They had the time to slide and slip in and not use a strap.
Yeah, strap on the front.
I like the relaxed aspect of it though, Tony, because, you know, I, it, it, it keeps them uniform, yet comfortable.
Correct.
So, that's a good compromise.
What I'm trying to figure out, uh, will this require all of the students to purchase new uniforms? I just got this.
So when you have them, uh, West, they, we will turn to polo style shirts. It can be a solid navy orange, blue, solid gray, or solid white. We're not requiring logos, just the polo style shirt. Uh, they can wear khaki pants, they'll get every color khaki, light or bay, uh, uh, light or dark. Navy pants or black pants, I believe, did include black, or they may wear denim jeans. And so the only thing that would be different from this year would be, uh, the shirt, that, that polo style shirt, yes, sir.
So they won't be required to purchase by?
Yeah. But you know, they back hold them.
I understand that some, some people don't, can't afford it, some, some parents. I understand what you're saying, I was trying to see how much of a burden financially would it be on them since we've gone from one thing back to, uh, uniform?
Mr. West, in the past, when we had a problem with, you know, parents who cannot, um, afford a uniform, you know, with through the time of work, we can buy some uniforms. But I will say, St. Martin Baptist Churches out there in the country, uh, Lion Chapel, New Hope, New Beginning, and, uh, Pira, they've always taken the time to donate whatever we need.
So we've got a process set away that if we would identify families who may need some help and take care of it, it's just not because of getting out of way of it, that there is another option you want to open it.
And I think this relaxed thing would allow that as well. It'd be an easy one to do to, to, to.
Also, board, in talking to parents, parents would prefer this because it is more cost-effective than, uh, you know, buying clothes for. Yeah.
Whereas you buying a, uh, nine dollar polo in comparison to a twenty, twenty-five, forty, fifty, ninety grand polo shirt.
Right.
Okay, well, I assume that all this information is correct. We don't have a scientific survey.
No, we don't have a scientific survey, I, I, I think, well, it gives it all to the phone where, I mean, you used to have to buy the blue and the, what's it called?
Blank.
No, no, I'm talking about the pants, now you don't have to buy the pants at all, you can wear jeans.
I'm just saying, before this year, before we, uh, going back, we've been doing something else the last couple of years, right?
Since COVID, yeah, since COVID. And one reason why we, we had abandoned the idea during COVID time was because a lot of the local vendors, they not, they failed to order, you know, they failed to order shirts and all right.
But I'm just saying, this is a change from what we're doing the next couple of years. Yes.
And, uh, back to the crocs, maybe if you're more detailed, because you know, you do have loafers style crocs, you got all different kinds of crocs these days. You got croc boots, you got all kinds of crocs.
It should be something in there that says closed toe and closed heel.
Okay.
So that, I think that would take care of that.
Well, see, it says no crocs, so people would raise, think, I just think it needs to be more detailed when you say no crocs. No over toe crocs, no closed toe, cause they do, they have all different, they have loafers, they have ties, boots, crocs.
Crocs have to explain it, you know, what are the one of the crocs?
It's a brand, yeah.
Yeah, fine, I guess. Get with Ms. Boyer, put you in.
I, I, I take that reference, thanks.
Okay.
You know, you put Mr. Field at a different brand, cause you know, and we don't shop for ourselves, they.
Right, so great job.
So, what's the food is?
Yeah.
So moved with the, uh, detailed information in.
Yes, sir.
It's been moved in seven, all in favor? All right, passes five zero. Eight point seven.
Eight point seven two, Mr. James and members of the board, this memorandum random understanding with smiles to go, we've been working with them. I know for probably four hours, like, fifty years, I've been in the district. They actually come in and try to help provide some internal help, you know, for our students, they thought based on the Lord's race. Uh, until last year, the anticipation, until last, you know, until COVID, the anticipation among our students having very good. And we usually ask them to send us a statistical report, but due to the fact that we have really, really concentrated on the program a whole lot in the last three years, we would, we wouldn't have had a lot of information in the latest statistical report.
Oh, I'm definitely, I believe that we approve this, I agree.
One second.
It's been moved in seven, all in favor? Okay, eight point eight.
Eight point eight, this is nothing more than extending our memorandum of understanding with embarrassment. The only difference between this memorandum and the last memorandum, memorandum, I think that we are asking for ten less flights than we've been paying the past, like the past, we had a total of seventy-five flights. So now we're asking for six or five flights.
Let, let me, let me ask you a question. Okay, we, we got six or five flights, anything over that slot would have cost, it still would be the eighth hour?
Uh, for the most part, we usually, for over there, we usually get together, get on the phone, come to some time, that's the thing.
Okay, we are under there. See, it's at the five twenty, we pay that regardless?
We don't pay regardless. Most of the time, we, we're not gonna ever be under this slot. Now, sometimes we go over the number of flights, but we never under the slot.
So the extension is actually the same as the contract we've got now?
For the most part, yeah. I just want to be used to know on flights.
Okay, I'm terms of the, the cost per slot.
And let you say, uh, this is three year.
Yeah.
And let's say, when you're setting here, my staff, we wanna do our own thing. Still gotta go to three years.
I don't know, I can't, I think they use an exit clause, we need contract.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say. Not from my memory, not when, uh, I'd have to pull it out and look at it. Well, most of the time, all the contracts we do get have, and I'm thinking.
Got the exit clause.
Of course. This may be a little different, Mr. West, cause, uh, they have employee commitments and they have to be fulfilled and have that. I just don't remember when, when we did it, so years ago. This, this would be the same body of a contract, this is just a little bit, yeah, on price.
So I want to be clear, we had seventy-five slots in a certain amount of money. And we, uh, reducing it to sixty-five slots is a certain amount of money. Or is the money being? There's a reduction by eight thousand, eight thousand, eight thousand, okay, I think we want to be clear on it.
You know, the last contract we gave, the most contract, the last one.
I'm thinking of a three-year contract. I think it's three, it's a three-year contract, I think it always been a three-year contract.
I suspect there is an exit clause, but would be tied to the end of the school term, rather than the end. No, this, you know, that would be my guess, but I don't know for sure.
And we did have attorney to look at it due to the fact it was the same contract base and we just reducing the number of flights. So we can, if you wanna just, uh, we can always table it and let him look at it and bring it back to the next line.
Well, I don't, I know, and I'm thinking about the worst case scenario, in some case, I wouldn't wanna see a contract where it's three years or whatever, with no way to get out of it, and we have to pay for it, even though we're doing something different. And, and maybe that won't happen, it wouldn't happen, but, but at least past contract will give us some guidance.
Yeah, and if you like, we can just make, approve it based on the fact that there is a, a gap, the, the exit clause, if there's not an exit clause, we can go back and, and say, goodbye.
Okay. Yeah. Nobody has a problem with that. I love promotion, I love that as a motion. We would approve the contract subject to find out a real reason. I really want to have, yes, of course.
He, he worked.
Amen. Once we get that information.
Seven?
Seven.
All in favor?
Seven, yeah, he wanted to know what he think.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
Our promotion that we assume the contract as presented, subject to, in the view of the attorney and the superintendent, in the event there's a need to, uh.
Exit clause.
If there is no exit clause.
If there's no exit clause, like, some of them, even that, then you would have, you would have the option to come back and put them in.
You, you put it in your, he, he a good man, he ain't been quick to say he didn't say. Go with yourself.
I'm still going with the same.
You know what, you know what?
I know what he's saying.
All in baby. All right, baby, five zero, all right.
Okay, this is Secretary of Abuse, coming from Seattle.
Eight point nine.
Okay, eight point nine, I've had a call from, uh, a, a family member representing the, uh, the Bright Star, uh, scholarship. They were very consistent about this. This is a, a former resident of the Natchez area, so only went to Natchez High School. The grandmother attended Bright Star Church, that's the church behind the, the Democrat there. And they want to award two scholarships every year in memory of their mother, so. The application, all, it was printed all to, you know, to the high school, to the, to the high school and to the, to the county, and I just thought it was, uh, it's saved a whole life for somebody who's awake here, who wanna come back and, and contribute this to, uh, spiritual.
So.
Is this? I was gonna ask, is this something we must technically approve, you know, to accept it, because she's not going through us for the scholarship? I mean, she's gonna, I, I mean, I, I just don't know.
We have to prove any guilt.
I understand that, but, okay, is she gonna identify and oversee the scholarship herself?
The guidance council.
Oh, she's gonna do, understood it.
The guidance council will make the recommendations of her, if it's her fault, right, particularly.
That's what I'm saying.
So.
So.
Yeah, the month of August.
Agnes, um.
I would move to second.
He said, no, I'm feeling that.
You know what? All in, all in baby. Baby, five zero. So, Agnes, you know.
Agnes who? Name not being available. She, she in my age category, you must be, she has to be a five.
She is related to, um, Bill Martin.
Yeah. She's a sister. Oh, okay. Let me ask you this, uh, did she say how much this scholarship was going to be?
Fifteen.
Per person, or total? I cut it, two fifteen dollars?
Yeah.
It's nice.
All right, uh, eight point ten, we are having, we've been having difficulties trying to secure substitute teachers ever since COVID, like. Uh, there is a surrounding parent explaining a hundred dollar day to serve, and, uh, we got people crossing the river to serve, and we really need those persons to serve here. Uh, so we wanna, uh, at least for the next nine to ten weeks, increase our subpay to a hundred dollars a day, to see if that's gonna help us to increase our substitute pool.
Let me ask you this, um, with that also, um, for permanent subs, do you need it? They get more anyway, but are you, since you're doing subs, are they included or not?
Well, uh, right now, we, we're talking about the day-to-day sub, the permanent sub, already, you get the permanent sub, once you work forty days, your money automatically keeps in, more money keeps in.
Okay.
I, I move that we approve to increase the pay for substitute teachers.
Moving seven all in baby, all right, baby, five zero, okay, eight point eleven.
Okay, eight point eleven, we met with, uh, Senator Thompson, a, a number of times, uh, I think before Sunday last month.
He's a congressman.
Congressman.
Um, no, yeah, I'm sorry.
I didn't, I didn't want to have him on record as being promoted.
And.
Although it would be a bad idea.
Yeah. Mr. West called me one Sunday morning, I guess about six o'clock, when nobody looked at the building, wanted to look at the Fraser building, right? But at the time, we, we thought that due to the fact that the, uh, development is gonna be over at, uh, First Academy, and we thought that maybe, that we eventually can turn First Academy, part of First Academy, to a one-stop shop situation. So he sent down his representative, uh, about two weeks ago to look at the facility, and I was, I was out of town that day, Mr. Mack, I met with Mr. West, we didn't miss Mack, but Mr. West, he could make a deal, wouldn't, wouldn't they know?
Well, well, basically, we just looked at the two, first two, I think the location, I mean, the amount of square footage, and I consulted with, uh, our board of attorney, one thousand, two hundred and seven nine feet, a, a, a square foot space. Uh, and he preferred that, as Mr. Butcher basically said, uh, he had looked at Fraser, had looked at, uh, Robert Lewis, and the last, looked at Freshman Academy, and that was the space he preferred, based on the convenience of where it's located and so forth and so on. And so, uh, I, I talked with, uh, board attorney, and, uh, we also asked him what was the normal kind of price that they pay for this kind of space in other areas, and they basically gave me, you know, nine or five hundred dollars, even though we let people, we leave these people's face for a dollar or nothing, but we put my talent in. But in any case, so, I, I think Bruce would be in a better position if there's any other thing that you want, uh, explained, Bruce? So we have to do a resolution in order to do it, and Bruce has drawn up a draft, and all of that, Bruce, you wanna?
So, I think, I sent to you by email, and, uh, there's a copy of the resolution, the authorizing resolution, that's, that's, you know, statutory necessary in order for us to enter into a lease, uh, of this type without, you know, a competitive being processed. Uh, this is a short-term lease, uh, it cannot extend beyond the term of his office. Apparently, the way it works is, the federal government has an office that coordinates district offices for congressmen, and, um, perhaps senators as well, uh, and pays the rent, and, uh, they have certain requirements and provisions that have to be in their lease. You have a copy of the lease, my guess is, that's gonna get modified and tempered with by, by a deal to satisfy their requirements. But what I think we wanna do, go ahead and adopt the resolution, and then, when the lease is in final form, bring it back to you for, uh, final.
Let me, let me say two things, first of all, before I forget, let me commend Mr. Butcher, he called at six o'clock in the morning, right? When we looked at these particular site locations, and I don't know if he'd not get on it, he came himself, uh, and helped carry us to the various buildings and that kind of thing. Uh, and I, you know, and so I want, want you to know that he's a, he's a real hard-working man. On, on Sunday, on Sunday morning.
Well, I thought he'd be asleep at six o'clock.
Now, there you go.
So you get up at six o'clock.
And I do wanna say this, this would be the first time, in I don't know how many years, I'm so old and I've forgotten. I think the last Congress person to have a office in Natchez, Mississippi, was, I think, when Wayne died, it was the Congressperson, if I remember correctly. Well, it's, it's been, it's been thirty or forty, yeah, since we had a Congress, uh, Congressperson's office in Adams County. Uh, and it's gonna cover four counties of course, Adams, uh, Jefferson, Wilkerson, and Franklin.
Okay.
And, and that kind of thing. So I, I'm just saying, I think we can go right down the street, we need to nip on something and ask for it.
Well, Mr. Butcher, I would appreciate if you get up a little, take a minute or not, I, I, I do.
You know, I was impressed with, with him, you know, you see somebody on TV and you have one perception of them, but really true, he was really down to earth, and what he wanted to do, make sure that people have access to his office. So I told him, almost everybody in Natchi go to Wal-Mart, some are like, you know, the Wal-Mart is just kinda right around the corner, and you know, you don't go to Wal-Mart, you got to come to one, uh, Wal-Breed, you coming somewhere.
Yeah.
And you, you were gonna pose privacy, but he, you know, he, he that particular case.
Okay, I move that we, uh,
I think you get a certain legal.
The memorandum of understanding lease agreement between NASD and Congressman Bennett Thompson.
We gotta adopt the resolution first. I think, right?
I, I guess, please.
So. Offer motion to adopt the resolution.
That we adopt a resolution, uh, Bruce, for a proposed lease agreement between NASD and Congressman Bennett Thompson.
I'm second.
All in baby.
Now, we, do we need to, uh, can we go on and adopt the, the lease agreement itself, subject to?
I know. You know, I, I think you can, just in case there's no changes to it, you don't have to deal with again. I believe there're gonna be changes, you know, but you could adopt this lease form, and then.
With the necessary change.
If it's amended, we'll adopt the amended form.
Okay.
And then we're gonna have to go back.
Right, that's what I was going, in order not to slow them down. I, I'll offer as a motion, we could adopt a lease, uh, change, and, and any other changes that may. Now, I'm offering a motion that we could adopt the proposed lease agreement, uh, for Congressman Thompson.
Second.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all in baby. Eight, five, zero. They didn't call me. Oh, good, well, he went back to DC by the way, I got.
We older people don't sleep as long.
I, I, I'm getting there way now, it's night ball now. Okay, now, Mr. McDonald Green, nine point one, this is going to be.
Mr. James, I, I, board, uh, we do not have houses for review for this month.
Okay, now.
I move. I just.
Nine, nine point two.
I was going, I was gonna ask, before we, because these are discussions that we would have, that we don't need any action?
No, we don't need any.
Okay, I was gonna say, maybe we need to go into executive session, not to let, uh, talk about the, the company personnel issue?
But you probably need to, you have to report, pray for.
Okay.
If you let, they'll be gone, they ain't got to come back, because they had to waste others in there. We get rid of them, and then we're going on, they go.
Right, I was gonna, us.
From nine point four on down, everything, okay.
Sort of wants you, wanna hold on.
Okay.
And whoever else we have.
Good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board, this is Butcher, this is McDonald Green. Before you, you have to F O report for the month of fifth, February, are there any questions?
I have no questions.
No question.
Thank you, thank you.
Board, calendar, anything need to be added or taken off? Okay, we have to do the one thing, the audit report has to be in the, uh, open session, then after that, we can go into it. The nine point four, you continue to update, do the audit.
Uh, I could do an audit after.
Okay, what about the audit?
At thirty, all right, here I go.
They're not too thick.
There you go. Yeah, they got, I got a little low for y'all. Let me, let me first, let me first just say. It's all good, no?
I, I, I'll have it.
Well, first, let me just give, send the apologies from our external CPA firm, Silas Simmons, LLC. They were here, uh, the partner is working on his account, Scott Adams. He had another pressing meeting that he had to make it to. So, um, I told him, yeah, I'll just, I'll just do my best there, if there's a problem, they just call you. But, uh, but no, I do my best with answering anything, any questions, but if not, I'll definitely follow up with them, they will have more insight. Um, wanna make sure I say that first, so, this is the twenty twenty-one audit that has been completed recently. And if anybody has problems sleeping, you know, you could have us by bed, and I promise you, if you start at the front, you're not gonna make it to the back. But, uh, I'll just go through a few.
I'm sure I understand.
Okay, I just, I'll go through a few other things in here, and, um, if there's anything that comes to you, you know, definitely, we, of course, it could, could come and we'll, we'll address it, and if he needs to come back or anything, if he wanted to do that.
Since we're just getting this, I can, you're coming back, or somebody's coming back.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, sure, I mean, we, we can, uh, we could definitely table an update and let you all.
I'm just asking.
I could at least tell you some of the things to look at.
Of course, that's.
Uh, let me just tell you at least some pages that's real key.
Now, now, what I'm saying is, let us. Okay, say what they hear first.
Oh, just, sure thing, that'll work, that's all good. All right, all right. I'll slide back through here.
All right.
Everybody was asleep.
So, yeah, all right. Okay, let's do a close determination.
I think that we're going to close to termination, second.